Okay, so the time is six thirty, we'll call me border. It's February sixth, the committee of the whole community development. It looks open without zoom or listening to our screening, but nobody on zoom, okay, that's good. I also want to acknowledge Ms. Katie Nolan is in the is in attendance. She's the executive director of the Grandville CFDC and she'll be having a presentation there for us. As well as one of the from the residents in there as well as I'd also like to acknowledge and take some credit to welcome our new advisory members, David Doby and Kim Martin. Thank you very much for putting your names forward, it's gonna be great. Been working for four years on the way and make some great changes.
Two years.
Two years. Right, really paid us all. On a special that I'd like to also make sure that everyone be aware that Council Markham will not be in attendance and sent to get her tonight. So you have those before plus our two advisors. Okay, so moving on to number two, which is the approval agenda and we have a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Council's mail, second by the mayor. All in favor? Okay, is there any, sorry, yeah, I made some notes. Yep, any business arising from the previous committee meeting minutes? Well, disclosure, I'll just sort of start with that. Number three, disclosure for primary interests of the general leader there, anybody?
None by me.
None by me.
None by me.
All right, now, now you can move on to the business arising from the previous committee minute meetings.
I had just one and and I think we discussed it. For reading through, I didn't realize that the previous mayor had asked for a report. Did we receive a report on the work on Dundas Street?
This is from the working official?
Yep. Did we receive the report or did we just receive an update?
The working official preparing work for this. I'm not sure which committee you were in, because it was the wrong I see. But I think there was one.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because when I was reading through the minutes, he had asked for one. I wanted to make sure that there was, that was the only question I had.
All right, do we also have any? Okay. All right, then. Hearing done, then let's go on to number five. Delegations and presentations, number five A. Ms. Katie Nolan is here to discuss the Grandville CFDC.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm following along on my reading copies. So thank you very much for having me here. I was here about a year ago, I think, and some faces were in the room at that time, and I did want to come back and have a visit. The council is in place and wanting to introduce us, the Grandville CFDC, and to provide an update on our programs and policies. And you know, I have to, not only be a little bit scared. So as it says on my slide, connecting with the councils is definitely something that I'm working on sort of this season. I want to make sure you're up to date on our programs, but also I'm hoping that being here might spark some ideas on how we can continue to collaborate on that. I already see our role as Grandville CFDC, I'm a large part to support the community that we serve and helping them to achieve their own goals. So I hope that by the end of this little talk, that there might be some ideas sparked and I welcome ongoing conversation about that. So a little bit about us, and I think this is definitely for you for some of you, but just to be safe, I'm gonna go over it again. So for those of you not as familiar with Grandville CFDC and what we do, we are a community-based nonprofit. We've been in the community for over thirty years and we we receive operational funding from Fed Dev Ontario. So we are from a network of sixty-one peer community future organizations all across rural Ontario and two hundred and sixty-seven across Canada. So this is a nationwide program to support rural communities in act on development. So we work locally with our volunteer board of directors, we are accountable to them, and we are mandated to assist in various ways with local economic growth. So we take half of police grandville, the grandville half, which is Augusta, Edward Ricardo, of course, Prescott and Mark Grandville. So my thought including our vision and mission might be a quick and easy way to get a sense of what we're all about. So what we envision for our community as a prosperous, global economy and vibrant community. And we do this, we work towards this vision by investing in jobs, businesses and innovation. So how exactly do we do that? There's three main lines of business that we work in. First is business loans, the second is business bribery services, and thirdly, we work more broadly in the act on development. So I just wanted to touch briefly on each of these and tell you a little bit about how we do this work. So for business lending, we can lend to businesses up to three hundred thousand dollars. We provide very customized solutions for their needs depending on what they require. We can work with them solely or we can participate with other institutional institutions and provide pop-ups to other lending theorists. We work with businesses all across the business development spectrum, from startup to succession and expansion. And really, you know, as you'll see, really focus on the businesses like the startups that might have difficulty getting financing elsewhere. And so our loan can use our whole range of business needs, including real estate financing, cash flow, moving forward, etc. So on the on the other side of things, we also have developed a product called Micro Loan. And this product is really geared towards businesses that need a streamlined process. We have very favorable rates for these small amounts under three thousand dollars. And it's really designed for that startup business that needs a little bit of a boost to get started, maybe to invest in inventory, help with cash flow or what have you, or for the sole provider that needs a little injection of cash. So that program is starting to really get traction, we're seeing a lot more businesses need this of that. And then maybe they grow their business, they're able to work with us and our program. So that's all going good, but I guess what I really want to emphasize about our lending program is that it really gets unique and fills a specific gap in financing. Our program is specifically designed by the federal government to ensure that there that all businesses have access to capital. As we know, some businesses really have a hard time accessing capital from traditional lenders. Maybe they are able to develop their business to a certain point, they can then work with those lenders. That's what we're here to do, is to help those businesses survive and thrive and give them to where they need to be. So we really pride ourselves on being extremely flexible with our lending and working with the business in terms of what their needs and outcomes are. Because our mandate is that not development and nonprofit, we are able to do that and provide a very high degree of flexibility when we're working with businesses. So in addition to our lending, we also provide business advisory services. And this is a whole range of help that we can provide to businesses at no charge to them with, you know, starting a business plan, creating a business plan, executing business plan, reviewing their operations to see where they might be able to create efficiencies. We pride ourselves on being really networked in our community, so we understand what other programs and services are out there, not just locally, but also, you know, at federal provincial government levels. And so we we really try to make sure that we can provide good quality referral to businesses depending on what their needs are. So we, I guess the way we look at this is if the business comes through a door, whether they're looking for financing or they just don't aren't really sure what they need at this point, or they're looking for a specific type of service, there's always something we can do to support them, even if it's just pointing in the direction of a colleague or a partner organization to make sure that they get what they need. So in addition to our business advisory services, we also recognize very keenly that economic development is so much more than the private sector and so much more than just our businesses. Economic development is a community effort that takes a lot of different partners in various sectors. So we really take that seriously and try to provide comprehensive support towards community economic development. So when we, you know, I thought of making helpful to go back to our vision of a prosperous, local economy and vibrant community. So what do we really need to achieve a vision like that? A whole bunch of things in addition to a great and thriving diverse community. We need strong community organizations, we need active volunteers, we need effective business services that are present in the community and accessible to businesses. We need strong support of local governments, we need really good competitive planning processes around economic development, etc. So these are all things that we also are trying to support in, you know, in service of our community economic development goal. So to do this, we offer a range of support to those various partners. We can provide support, participation or guidance if necessary on economic development strategic planning initiatives. We really try to support the local volunteer-based community organizations that support our businesses. We, as I said, try to stay networked so we can provide great quality referrals. And sometimes we can provide seed funding for initiatives that support community economic development that are going to create that environment that's favorable for businesses to to thrive in our community. So our seed funding really depends on current development priorities as well as our own fluctuating budget and our board interests. But again, my sort of guideline for anyone is please let us know what initiatives that you're working on. We want to be of service and if we can support you in one of those ways, we definitely like to talk about it. So on along the lines of community economic development, I did want to put in a plug here for a workshop coming up. This is offered by some of my former colleagues at the Ministry of either Culture, Food and Water Affairs. They here after municipal election, they always do a bit of a tour around the province and meet with primarily councils and staff people to talk about this sort of wider concept of community economic development and how local governments can really position themselves to support community economic development in the most comprehensive way possible. So if you're around on March eighth, it's a free workshop up in North Grandville and it should be a great day of learning. Just a little shout out to some of the amazing businesses that we have the privilege of working with. As you can see, we really work across sectors, we work widely across Grandville County in our region of responsibility and we take great pride in having the privilege to work with these businesses. And that brings me to the end of my presentation. I look forward to any calls or conversations about some of your priorities in act on development.
Thank you, Katie, I appreciate you coming and having your presentation with us. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments they want to talk about, but anybody with anything to say?
Thanks, thanks Katie, for presenting. Just making some notes, the workshop on Wednesday, March eight. It says municipal leaders, economic development volunteers, business support organizations, is it business owners as well? Or is it limited to those?
I mean, business owners are certainly welcome. It's it's not, it really is a workshop that pays that broad view of economic development. So a business owner probably isn't going to come in with the physical or great tools for their business specifically, but more broadly, yeah, I'll probably can collaborate to create an economic development.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Katie, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Just a few questions. Did you say your location is in North Grandville?
We, our office is actually in Prescott.
Your office is in Prescott. And interest rates, what are the interest rates on these loans?
So our lending is between prime plus two, within prime plus five. And yeah, we we can, that's sort of a set rate that our under case.
Hey, it's nice when I look at this sheet of paper of these businesses that you are, you have printed on here. It's nice to see the number of the mark from Members' Burrow.
Yes, absolutely, and looking for more businesses from Members' Burrow, I want to work for sure.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Katie. I do like the business advisory service at the end there, all all the things you do at no cost to the people because we all know small businesses, every penny is so important to them. So, but I also have another question, when you say business, business, do you do agriculture?
Absolutely.
That's all, I think I asked you that.
Yeah.
I just want, I'm sorry.
Please just ask one more time and then you'll get the answer.
Thank you, that's hopefully I don't have got anything. Okay, anybody else? Okay, just as far as I just had one, you and you know, I don't know if you have an example or not, but it'd be interesting to see some sort of example of working with strong community organizations. I don't know, what kind of stuff would you be doing with those to help with development as more organizing? You know, or would you be organizing that?
Well, it really depends. All of both the north and south Grandville chief of commerce and really try to use our network, you know, in the business community to ensure that they know that chambers are there for them to help improve chamber membership and ensure that there are a lot of businesses that are taking advantage of those services. You know, but I think one of the most shiny examples of an active and effective community on your organization is the sensitivity to community connections and the work that they do is incredible. We try to attend multiple meetings, participate with what they're trying to do. You know, if there's an initiative that comes up that, you know, I have personally had the opportunity to work on a specific project with them. But, you know, that's why we stay in touch, right? So that we know what their priorities are and if there's some way that we can get in there and support them in their issues that we, you know, we're ready to do that.
If I could ask one more question. Katie, I've been involved at all with United Counties and Police and Guard.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. We stay really closely in touch with their economic development department and our project business support group. And we really try to stay connected on what the local priorities are shaping up to be. You know, they just did a fantastic series of surveys across COVID. I think they've done now the third annual one, or hundreds of businesses, you know, reporting on, you know, their experiences recovering from pandemic. So we rely on that data and, you know, try to work really closely with the county's departments so that we were all kind of on the same page and going in correctly.
Well, it's nice to see that you're working with the different organizations, but then leaves in Grandville because years ago, it always used to be spread, this would be doing this one, this organization, and then there wasn't a connection.
Yeah, you know, I really found that COVID helped to catalyze a lot of collaboration. And, you know, some, you know, for example, the business support working group, I don't know, there's probably eighty people around the table. And, you know, I think having been able to collaborate like that in an emergency, you know, the momentum's there, right? So we can get my.
Okay, thanks.
And, you know, I could just follow along that, I know, you know, we just came out of an election, I hear and what we're talking about and, you know, community development and not necessarily the economic part of it, but it's amazing. The economic development, the economic development of the community really helps to also let the rest of it prosper as well.
Absolutely, it's essential, hard car is long, it's a danger.
Great, okay, anybody else have any thoughts or questions? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Thank you for me, and we'll hopefully see you on, well, see you on the, possibly, if you can, if it's there.
For sure, yeah, I need like, put me by his name or.
Absolutely, I can stay as long as you want. Can we get you to run the agenda or not? So, okay, so it's good, so a little more questions, so moving on then to to number six, action. Action information in the session items, six A is, is, or live, and we have a resulting by law. So with the community development court, it would like to be a summary of that, that'd be great.
Certainly, so to the chair, please, but the application for a zoning by law amendment. So at this meeting, what we're looking for is just permission from the committee to schedule a statutory public meeting required by the planning app. And the public need to hear comments from the public on the application prior to facilitating the decision on that application. So what the application's for is to clear condition, a severance file, the trend twenty-two, a thirty-one oh six, kind of road twenty-one, that's a kind of one in Erie Road. So that severance is being conditionally granted by the parties and one of the conditions is that the zoning amendment is obtained to prohibit future non-agricultural use on the routine personal. That is because I want to provide an empty cell for the new members, but I don't want to be a old member still. Still, you know, this or I'm not getting a confirmation. The provision policy statement and therefore also our official plan doesn't allow us to create in building lots in the private agricultural lands within our agricultural policy area. We are allowed to severance as there are only very specific reasons, so we can do minor boundary adjustments. We can create a new lot there for agricultural purposes, so they're forty acres, a new agricultural lot. Or we can sever off a house that is surplus for farm operation. And when we do that, we have to make it so that the agricultural retained lot can't have a house there again, or you can not enculture it. But otherwise, we would be creating a building block. So what this zoning by law does, it makes it so that a person can't be built there in the future. Yeah, so we might play a report from, we can find the agenda, the decision from the counties, from the severance file and some of the maps and sketches and the raise from the applicant, where the process is.
Thank you very much, and feel free to elaborate as much as you need to, I think, for the next little while especially. It's always good to get that one, because I know sometimes we forget, to your point. Just want to remind everybody, this is just a scheduled public meeting.
I think we told me how much the territory is worth of it to pay to get this rezoned.
Well, there is, the application to the clause B is twenty-five hundred dollars. So what happens, this is in our planning B by law. The application to the clause B comes in and it is put into the severance account. And that money is used to pay the cost of processing the application. There's five hundred dollars, then we leave that place for township costs, like my tribe, the city, we are doing what that. The rest of it goes towards a or our better notice, absence of costs. Basically, if there is money left over at the end of the action, after the decision is made, we would check to, you know, if there is money opening, what is, then some of the invoice to cover. The idea is that development, others, case work development. And we don't ask the general taxpayers to pay the costs on that, there's.
I just find it strange and I know it's not your problem and I'm sure it's an unfair of problems directly, you know, I I realize that. But this hasn't been there since like in the late eighteen hundreds. It isn't, it hasn't been, and like it hasn't been built in the last three or four or five years. You know, I don't understand why the local government just doesn't let township sever off just as a surplus law. And let's get on with the story, there are all these bylaws that are required right now. I don't want to trip on, but I just think it's something, the local government right now is looking to cut the red tape. Why not, nobody doesn't love a piece of red tape that needs to be cut here. I'm not, you know, I'm totally in favor of what Clarice has to do, but it's just that.
That's it, sir?
All right, is there, is there a discussion that you can have? You know, maybe that's something completely have to have, I'm not sure. You know, it is very bottom edge potentially, but yeah, no, it's looking for public basis, we need it solved and it's scheduled. Yeah, I have a comment just on the severance in general, but then, but then I really don't have any other that I'm happy to move a motion to, to let's get, staffs can go. The, I know we're not going back in our reactions, the whole idea is that the discussion is just to set an identity. However, I just want to point something out and and it's and it's just a question for staff. So number two on the Nova Tech memorandum page, so page twenty-two or forty-eight. Number two is the severance, and it points out that it's one hectare, which is two point four seven acres. The reason we went with that is is to comply with our own official law. Right, that's the reason we went with that size? We're not allowed to do a rural severance or an agricultural severance smaller than that.
To the chair, the idea is to, in this thesis, they're not far willing to the smallest size possible so that we aren't taking any additional agricultural land from, from agriculture. We want as much agricultural there as possible, but our our official players in the agricultural zone, such that we don't lock size for residential purposes, two point four seven, like we are taking.
So the reason, that was my question, so just so that it's on the record, so so the reason that it's two point four seven acres or one hectare is 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 because it's in our in our own official plan that it has, that's the minimum lot size that we can have. Correct, yeah.
Exactly, the official plan is every zoning by law. The number of lots are in the official plan, but the.
For the number of lots.
The number of lots, I know that they show up in the official plan, but I don't, is the.
The minimum lots.
The minimum lot size is not not a zone.
But it's, it's simple. It hurts, depending by, based on the official policies.
The reason, the reason that I bring it up is is the discussion is around trying to minimize the impact on agricultural土地. But yet, but yet we're demanding that they go with two and a half acres when, you know, there's there's an argument to be made that, you know, when we have done severances in the past where somebody applies for a variance to that and and we do them for as small as an acre. And I I just want to make note of it because I I struggle this. We're trying to keep farmlands that we're forcing them to actually sever off three acres when maybe one would have been enough. That's, it's just my argument, it it's or it's a discussion for a different day and not, I don't think for this one. I know that this is for that, but I just noticed it when I was reading through my notes and just something that over the next four years that I'd like to see. Right, so you need a motion and I'm happy to move a motion to have staff schedule a date for a public meeting, that's what you. So I'm happy to move that motion, you know, so maybe second.
Oh, that's right, that's right. And you know, second.
Just for clarity, can we, committee members second, but they don't have votes?
Remember the chair, with the new terms of reference that council approved, all of the advisory members are non-voting members, so they can't move second vote.
So they can't move second or vote, so it has to be under.
Entering the discussion.
Just for clarity.
So forwarded by Mayor Deputy, sorry, Mary Nation and and seconded by Deputy Mayor Gilliba, that committee direct staff proceed with the scheduling of a public meeting dated for the zoning amendment applications filed for lands at thirty-one oh six, thirty road, number twenty-one, taken to a vote, they were all in favor.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Do we know when the? Do we, do we, chair, do we know when this meeting is coming, please, public meeting?
Uh, the chair, we will, uh, has, uh, you know, he's been that, we can think about these. Why do you, why don't you know this in public? So, um, it will be, it will be in my. How could the public notice that would be from a small, you know, will be.
Okay, so moving on to, uh, six B, which is work, economic development, um, number one. The small business and trade show, uh, twenty twenty two, and the presentation, uh, or, uh, ingredients from the community development coordinator, so.
Okay, all of this is clear to know. It is going to be, it is pressed out again on March second and fourth. Uh, we've done this for a few years in a row now. I'm always happy to have the support of the community development committee. Uh, however, the show gives something very careful to meet with residents and get some feedback. And then on the other side, it's also nice to go around to the other booths and get to know other local businesses as well. I think for us, we get, we get a lot of it. Um, so like last year, I'd like to have the township gift bags done right now. I have sent out letters to, um, uh, local businesses. I haven't got a lot of response yet, but these are useful shopping bags. And we have stuff full of menus or business cards or coupons or flyers or, uh, whatever the business has to share. And then if people come into the show, we can hand them a little piece of eduts or cardos, usually just people to come and visit us or if they live here to, you know, shoot people over. Um, and it's, it's, it's something I'm, I'm proud to hand it last year. It was really nice to, to be about, like, to be that I have. Um, we really like some of the committee's support to, um, supplement their businesses and, uh, and offer if they add those things to, um, to share. I think I sent a letter out to our conference and we shared for committee members as well, if you guys are willing to help. And the letters are in the agenda. Um, what else can I share? I've got some new frame hanging material, uh, printed in our booth. We've got some new, uh, just raw video footage, so we can put together, but you could play all this in there. That probably there, um, at the tackling, when there's some movement, when it's green, something fighting. Um, and if you would, um, and spend a couple hours at the show with me, um, please let me know with time and in time. It's like, look at that, seven people hopping out at the booth, having like.
It's gonna be interesting for that.
Committee members, uh, one on one as well, while we're just hanging out in the future and, um, before.
Thank you very much. And that's easy. And, uh, you know, to that point, uh, we, we've had a lot of time, uh, you know, just hanging out and, uh, no, no, we had the best of the plan. It all last year, very important to us, but, you know, we need to keep that, we need to keep that reputation up as well. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, you can cut me in for sure. Uh, you know, I know that, uh, that Brian, I am actually also, you know, we can talk about the details, but, uh, would you something there? Oh, perfect. Great. Okay. Thank you for that. And, yeah. Um, I was, uh, speaking with Port GM and I don't believe that the port is, is going to participate, uh, directly. Um, but they did, I did suggest to the GM, you know, maybe reaching out with you to have, you know, some of their promotional materials so that you can have, uh, that table as well. And, and, you know, they've got a good video and it certainly attracts a little bit of attention. So maybe they can be, there's something with ours. And so there's a little, uh, something like that. So we can not just promote ourselves and our own businesses, but the public. Absolutely. My, a good point to, uh, to try and also promote our, uh, our new, uh, exhibit at the, at the advertising as well. So maybe we can do there. So, okay, good. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think one of the things we talked, uh, last week is, is just trying to help take various more businesses to, uh, to, to help, uh, make some stuff to, uh, uh, to our, to our packages as well. So again, like I said, um, maybe the setup chief, we can talk about that. If I get it, we'll get in the mail to try and, and get some of that and, uh, as I say, swam, but I'm better than that, uh, to what, of course. Excellent. Um, thank you very much. Uh, okay. And any questions or any comments? Uh, I, I, there's just one comment. Just wanted to, you know, sort of compliment the development coordinator on, you know, the work that she's done on this currently. And, and in the past, you know, certainly gift bag wars have been mentioned, but, uh, Wendy, I know you, you take great sense pride in the work that you do and just, you know, it's a good opportunity to compliment you on that, right? So. And I'd like to comment on a picture on page three to forty eight for this. Well, there you go, Peter. It says, there you go. Hard to see what that showed. Uh, all right. Anybody have anything else?
I think we said it all.
We did that, right? Uh, okay. Moving on to six B, number two. Uh, come here, you, we look very, uh, easy.
To the chair, so we have more to be, and there's a plan in place for Cardinal and Spentable. Um, and those plans require and before council approve the community development committee. Um, usually that, that report coincides on the financial incentive programs that are part of both of the plans. So I prepared that report here, didn't get a chance to put up the end of twenty twenty two, but it's still early in twenty twenty three, so, okay, good, thank you. Um, this is just, uh, new charts that show, um, what the township's contribution has been to, um, to profit. We only had the two applications last year. One of them is still in progress, um, but the other one was for the off spot that's been completed. So first type of like application, top type here is going to show the two applications that were made last year.
Thank, uh, and I know that this, that these two initiatives are on Spentable or more about developing our, uh, our, our main street, uh, areas and sort of, so, uh, you know, I mean, in main street is, is, you know, at least it's natural. So she really love, and, uh, this is more about. You know, that, that development really is so good. So, anything? Yeah, I, um, uh, so just as we move into budget with, with the, um, the projects from last, from last year. The amount that is in, is in for, we, we, we whip forward the money that they are the leftover, right? From, it doesn't go into reserves, it stays in there and then we top it back up to, to the amount. So we're going to expect whatever the, the two, an equal amount of whatever the two contributions were this year, we'll see that in our budget to, to get that number back up. Yep. All right. Uh, thank you for the report. And, uh, like I said, it's, it's nice to see that some of what we can manage of it. Nice to, uh, to do that. All right. Uh, so then we go to, uh, uh, there is nothing to do that. We never see that or anything, right? We just. Um, as far as six D, number three goes, uh, the twenty twenty two river bus, river route transit report. And we can't remember what I heard. I think, no, sorry. No, sorry. Up to, up to the.
Maybe I'll give the business to the chair of mine. So one, one of the requirements in the partnership agreement that we have together with the, um, Aaron Prescott, Archbishop of Augusta and David Brockville, is that the, uh, river, the transit system is sort of reviewed annually uh, in advance, uh, February twenty eighth. And by February twenty eighth of, uh, each year, uh, the council has determined whether they want to renew and participate in the agreement for, for one more additional year or provide, provide notice with partners, uh, that they wish to terminate their partnership. Uh, in the, uh, transit, the third route transit system. So, uh, just a little additional history with respect to that. The, uh, the initial phase of that project started in August of twenty twenty one, due December of twenty twenty one. It was a pilot project and we did receive some, uh, funding with respect to the Eastern Canadian leadership council. And it was more focused on attempting to get, uh, workers to their place of employment along, uh, over the Saint Lawrence River route. Did not certainly generate the, um, of the other activity that we, we were hoping to tell it, so, though the reason we're behind that was, uh, there are various times, especially if there was a shit worker in health, the, the system that wasn't running, uh, that, uh, line with respect. Who, who are actually taking a lot, taking them to work and then actually getting them back. However, uh, the, the decision was made by the, well, two municipalities to extend that, uh, for, for, for one year. They're into a partnership and they've been trying to expand. They were, you can capture more than just, uh, work related. The individuals taking the, uh, the transit system, uh, that they captured, um, seniors running to, to take care of the, to press on, block them, uh, to keep talking to one's promotion, whatever basically. So, uh, this report is just basically indicating the ridership numbers, basically from the start of the pilot project up until the end of, uh, December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Um, we certainly have seen, uh, I would say in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty two, some additional ownership compared to certainly the, uh, initial pilot project in the first couple of quarters of twenty twenty two. In addition to that, it, it, uh, the report showed the popularity of some stops in, uh, the, as everyone knows, within, uh, within our township, that one of the parking spots, uh, seemed to be the dogs just put them all in front of. And just my other note with respect to the, um, the agreement is the, uh, law that speaks to continuous improvement. And basically, uh, the, the success of the, uh, of the program, uh, was, was, was based on sort of the, the cost per ride, uh, continuing to the decrease in cost. So part of the, uh, the income statement that is on page thirty seven or forty eight were shown at the bottom of that table, that the continuous improvement impairment, which we were at basically fifty five dollars, fifty four cents during the pilot project. And with respect to the, uh, uh, fourth quarter or further fourth quarter of twenty twenty two, we were down to thirty six dollars and sixty eight cents, one thirty six dollars and fifty cents. Respectively. Yes, with that, I will, I will personally open it up to the board of the, the question.
Uh, you would have any questions, or whatever, Tom? Absolutely. Um, you know, I, I think, um, it's, you know, the project came in during, during COVID, it's, it's, it's taking its time. It's, it's in a constant state of, uh, of evolution. Um, but I, I really believe it's a forward thinking, uh, approach to, to rural transportation for many that, that can't afford or, or are trying to impact, uh, their environment a little bit less. So, um, you know, it's definitely noteworthy that it's heavily subsidized for sure. Um, but one of our goals was to see, as the C A O said, the, um, you know, the cost per ride, uh, decreasing. And I think that ever evolving approach to ridership has, has shown that we can reduce the cost of, of ridership. I think we still have a ways to go. Um, but I, I'm certainly not ready to, to pull the plug on it. And, and the longer this stays, the more valuable, I believe, it becomes to, to our rural communities. So, uh, I hope that members of, of council will, will find their way towards supporting this and, and continuing to give it a try. Uh, post-COVID, where, where we get, you know, things ramping up and, um, we can just continue that approach. But I think our communities were needed in the long run and, and I think it's really going to be, really going to be a great, a great thing for our community there to continue. Um, to have, I don't know that it's ever going to get itself to a cost control or anything like that. I think all transportation ends up being fairly heavily subsidized, but, um, or at least public transportation does. So that comments, um, and there for me, but my last one would be more of a question to, to, um, to probably to the C A O if, if possible through the chair. And that's, um, if we were to, to continue, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of modernization. But now is that a, a discussion for budget? Or is that a discussion that, that we, we entertain tonight? I know that would be taking away, you know, money that we've sort of allocated uh, in the past of the potential to, to use that for the development of council chambers. But, um, I certainly think that, you know, from a, uh, impact to the rate payer, um, using modernization uh, dollars makes the most sense to me. So I'm not sure if that's a discussion for here or if that's a discussion or an argument for budget time. But I know it's kind of moving shelves and, and many different envelopes, but I think, I think I, I prefer the source of funding to be modernization versus, versus, uh, taxpayer, like actual, or is it current on taxpayer level?
I mean, through the, through, through the chair, uh, I would, I would, uh, I would say that if, if the committee feels that they, they want to keep for one year, the, uh, probably would be welcome for the budget, this would really be pretty, uh, the, uh, of that thought from modernization and not, uh, not animal tax.
Yep. So for the chair, so as part of the recommendation then tonight, would, would it be included? The source of funding be included in that recommendation? It's not in the recommendation as it's written now. Would I need to, you know, would the suggestion be then to the rally that's supported this table now that we use modernization dollars for that? Or is that, is that a source of funding that we can do later or just?
I would say, I, I would do the chair, if you, if you're, you're, uh, solidifying the, the source of funding as modernization, it certainly you add it in, in the recommendation.
I'll let anybody else speak and I'll, I'll doctor the recommendation.
Mr. Chair, if you could just tell me about modernization, I would like, you know.
Modernizing.
Certainly through the, uh, through, through the chair, the presidential government, um, I would say that probably now well over two, two and a half years.
Yeah.
So, uh, providing some funding, uh, in this valley, looking at, uh, finding ways to, uh, optimize and improve from the services that they deliver to the future of the business. So, you know, we received that, uh, that funding, we, we placed it in, in reserve and, uh, and sort of, uh, working through some, some, some additional, uh, programs. We, we've updated our municipal website, utilizing some of the modernization, uh, funding. Uh, we've also spent some of that, we've, we've set the internal adjustment challenge. Uh, and, uh, as, as indicated by my earlier, we were looking to allocate, uh, a, a portion, uh, with respect to improvements to the municipal office, uh, potentially moving the, uh, council chambers to the upstairs and using additional office space in the, uh, in the system, the council chambers.
And thanks, and thank. Yeah, um, two suggestions or two, maybe two comments to what, to add to what the C A O said. I believe, uh, it would be worthwhile if we, um, you know, just for, maybe it is a good time that we bring that letter forward at, at, you know, uh, the next meeting, the, the letter from Minister Clark, uh, M M A H that talked about, you know, modernization dollars. And I, I believe too, uh, um, that talked about, you know, modernization dollars. And I I believe too, uh, um, the the idea then, or we at least the way we understood it was that we would see um a possible uh pet modernization dollars were to help us find efficiencies to help offset reductions to our O N P F, right? We would be at that time where we were getting, we were on our way down. I know we're on our, we've come back, we did the last two years, but but we certainly saw reductions in our O N P F and that that they were to find efficiency. At least that's the way I remember it. But maybe maybe I made the update too. It's been four years.
I would say indirectly that was that that certainly part of it. Not sure if it was specifically in the data.
The letter certainly outlines the uses for the dollars as well. So it's how and the letters are.
I I just want to say that I concur with the mayor's uh first delivery that uh I know we haven't got a vote and that's fine, but there are so many programs that I have seen in the past pilot programs that have never really had the opportunity to take off because there was always people that wanted to slap them right away after the first year. And I don't think that that's right. I think we should have go one more year anyway to see see what the outcome is at the end of the day.
I guess I I have a I think a couple of uh questions to this C E O. On first one, um, this hundred seventy three thousand three hundred dollar budget, that's the total between the three municipalities, is that right? So expensive.
So, uh, it would be uh through the chair, the deputy mayor, uh, correct, that is the that that is the budget estimate for twenty twenty three.
And that's not including our gas tax. And we'll probably get a little bit of funding from everything, everything on that.
So through the uh through through the chair, the twenty twenty three uh budget uh projects, that we would be receiving uh just over seventy four thousand in the uh potential uh gas. And so through to a separate.
Good. And number two, and this is just a question. I see our uh duty chairs, the C E O. I see in our first quarter of January one to the March thirty first, total ride six twenty seven. I'm just maybe trying to give a maybe suggestion to the to the two CEOs involved that we have a a March break. I wonder if we can maybe get something where we can do something with the theater of Rockville and promote our rights for the children when it breaks, you know, they're often uh uh on the March break. And for ten bucks, you walk down uh to Rockville plus maybe another kind of ten bucks for show. I haven't been shown here, so. I wonder if we can slow the motion with the theater. I think we could up that six twenty seven. It's kind of disappointing. That's just a suggestion.
Uh, buttons to do. It doesn't only runs during the day, I don't know.
So through the uh through through the chair, you know, that is, uh, that's correct. It's a Monday to Friday. Uh, uh, the last sort of pick up was probably the entire month of March, you know, the last four years. Yeah, no, listen, that's your time. That that's some that's some that's some of the uh I guess from the reason why it's it it takes off as much with respect to the uh community work, I think, more than that. Get one way, but 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 unlikely.
If they were to try, sorry. Uh, if they were to try to expand, I was in a queue, because I was suddenly was probably trying to balance the uh the gas room, yes, or so. Okay, um, so you have the, yeah, I'm going to move a recommendation. If that's, I would like to make a motion, sure. Uh, yeah, I just I just wanted to make sure, um, I'd like to say on the desk after, but uh, I did notice and I can't remember where I found it exactly. I didn't possibly like my comment in order here. Um, but I listened to talk about the actual, the heart of the bus itself. Uh, we're using a uh a a bus that was no longer being serviceable at Rockville, sounds like. And do we expect that to continue? So that there will be another bus down the road or something since uh they they find anything before it's the buyer of the bus is exercise.
Good, Chair. I I would characterize it as at fine, uh, the city of Rockville is now looking through uh their annual bus replacements. There, you know, uh, maybe it is over four years, we pass each eighteen year in the system. So typically with the 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 year that they're taking care of the service or going to replace will then made up the the river we have created. So, in in a future time, it's it's certainly something that we may consider. Uh, potentially needing to uh to to purchase that uh uh in parts. There's certainly some funding opportunities that are available. And I think it really gives an opportunity to that they have the system for another couple of years with any real capital investment in terms of money. Uh, appears to be, you know, a continued update in 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 ridership or.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, and I mean, uh, you know, and to the mayor's point, uh, I I like the upward trend that we're seeing on these numbers and uh uh, and as well, I have to uh, uh, Mr. Mr. Donnie, that, uh, you know, it it is trending upwards. It would be a shame to, uh, uh, that's not what that was on an uphill uphill climb here. So anyways, what a fourth day of uh emotion, very great. Sure, yeah, absolutely. So, um, I'm gonna, well, I'll keep it mostly the same. So the committee recommends that council renew the River Route Transit Service Partnership Agreement for the upcoming period of April first, twenty twenty three uh to March thirty first, twenty twenty four, and that funding for the service come from modernization dollars. So, it sounds good. That okay? That's perfect. Finally, a second or a second. Uh, forwarded by the mayor and then seconded by uh, and so what is well, uh, for that, that recommendation? I can repeat it again. You repeat it again. Okay, uh, there. Okay, so that's. Uh, moving on to uh number six C, uh, play recreation. Um, number one, Legion Way Park Lane Way, with your ratings. See, he's in there, this is the C A O.
The regular council meeting on a period, uh, on on the council with water in those wellhead. You know, there's no question made with respect to the lane way in front of the pavilion and canteen area. The at the waterfront with respect to winter maintenance. So typically, uh, that section is is only maintained uh sort of for three or four seasons. Uh, unless there were some type of winter festival or some um larger special activity that was occurring, it typically not be right in the main. Some of the reasons behind that is uh we keep the speed bumps on that lane way, which has complicated uh operations. And when you start, when you when you start probably maintaining that that road, you know, along that line, but there is potential for increased risk than mine in this respect to the uh just partially. But I think this is really right to be in an um session if I'm not, I don't know, the chair or uh the uh lady who uh is just okay, these are the all I should press. That's okay.
Thank you, C A O. Uh, do we have any questions? Like, so first I go last, though.
Uh, yes, uh, duty chairs of the C E O. Yes, I was getting, uh, people were asking, uh, have we ever done it before? Uh, cloud all the way out to where the ice. I I don't, that I I don't want.
Yeah, we did. The thing to your life, I actually, we 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 have, like, not on a, not on a regular part of the event. So certainly not every, uh, not every winter. On 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 occasion, that.
Yeah, and uh, through the chair, like, what do we not on a regular event, like? Not on the regular snowball event, I guess.
So, so, yeah, so through the through through the chair, there was uh five, ten, seven years of snow and that following that would not be on the uh list of uh roads or parking lots to be in the by.
But, okay, uh, duty chair, but could we look into it if afterward caught up, say, if it's snowing on Monday? And we had the streets all cleaned and so on Monday, Tuesday, could we plow it Thursday? Is that possible?
Through through through, yeah, there's interest. They'll keep that after the committee, the council proposes to do that on my basis. Working the operation.
I don't have questions for the chair. Just have a comment. Uh, I'm used to hearing that when I was employed. It takes maybe a half an hour to get the motor, what's going off, or you can take a dump truck. It doesn't take long to do it. And really, you know, the C E O, if there's a lot of fish sharks up there and someone requested it, uh, no super asks, take it, motor, whatever, whatever it is. It doesn't take other than the speed bumps sort of, and somebody rookie in there, he can great to the windshield of that motor if he doesn't want to do it. Uh, not sure if the ton truck would do with the heavy supply, but you probably would thought. It won't screw the floor and just put this way off. But I'm not sure that once it was done, because I heard the mud, if it's you, the two tons will probably be after. Just a comment.
Okay.
I, so, I'm fine. But I'm like, well, I don't think it's the plow, like, like you said, I don't think it's the plow, which is like five inches on.
Three, yeah. Uh, so just a couple of comments, probably a question first. So from a from a maintenance standard level, it's a three season road, so no expectation for for winter maintenance at this point. So to put it into to put it into the network, to have it, to have it maintained differently. What what is that? How do we do that? What does it mean to do that? Like, where would it fall in? Would it fall in behind sidewalks? Would it fall in ahead of sidewalks? How do you pick a service level in which in which it would be maintained?
So through 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 the chair, I would I I would suggest that all roads, parking lots, sidewalks are deemed to be in a state of uh state of repair and given the uncertainty that there is additional time that we think that has, it would be, it would be our most likely, um, like additional snow removal. So we would do the tour, uh, and this is the uh federal car out with the snow removal, and then we run uh our way out. That it would be required. So it's not something that we necessarily consider uh being uh being taken to the same as.
So it wouldn't fall, sorry, chair. So it wouldn't fall under minimum standard permitting. Like, it wouldn't be required to plow it when it gets to what our bylaws says or whatever, where we have to adhere to.
Uh, through 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 the year, I I would suggest that we all incorporated uh into the investment framework, potentially, um, that would access additional starting condition as sure that you're missing not, if you're not making to uh uh to to the business center, that just don't mind. Well, what tends to happen is that most yeah, it is, that's being a little bit more frequently, the expectation is that 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 puts into that. Now, I want to make the expectation of five centimeters, so the in that differentiation and would would be a wide as a
But but it would be through the chair then. So but it would be an increase versus what we do presently.
I would say, I I would say that's
I think that's a good start. So just a couple of comments, if I may, because we're we're certainly heading down. I know during the last four years, we certainly headed down a path where we wanted to see investment and we wanted to see polishing of of our waterfront. Um, you know, we we had a fantastic pathway installed. The Riverfront Committee did, uh, you know, great work coming to come through with some conceptual plans. Um, making sure that, you know, utilization of it in the winter for people that have chosen to walk there for three seasons, uh, I, there's a roadway there. Lots of people like to use it. Uh, it seems to get tons of of use for for ice fishing and 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 certainly it looks like there's an attempt to have a family day festival there as well this year. Um, you know, driving by all the time and watching folks try to plow it with their little pickup trucks and stuff. Uh, certainly if we can help get those, you know, get it cleared so that people can walk their dogs uh with some ease and people have the ability to get their um, their vehicles in there to utilize the area. I think it's it's fantastic. It goes towards um, that change that we all spoke about and and polishing up that old jewel that's down there. So with with minimal um effort, we may see, you know, some some really good positive feedback uh for that. So so I'm hopeful that that, you know, staff can come back with, you know, or it sounds like maybe there's an idea or plan there uh where it may fit in for that for that little bit of service level. So uh, personally, I'd love to see that. I think we've certainly been hearing it from from a lot of residents and and we've, I want to continue to push that good work that we've started over the last four years uh through the next four years as well, just continue developing that that area in the destination, whether it's uh spring, summer, winter or the Doug is allowed. Uh, anybody have anything else?
Do, I might have one, one thing. Um, I understand uh the river, I understand the road, I understand activity that they've placed down there. And I do like, you know, deep dive really that it like needs to be plowed, perhaps not on a regular basis. But I would caution council that you may not a slippery slope here because I know places, houses that are built on unmaintained township road allowances that they play clouds of themselves. And what are you going to do when they come in to you guys and say not down there? But am I, what have found your own road that might have stopped? I'm not lecturing, I'm just telling you. But I think it's good insight that that's to the situation. Bonnie, Bonnie knows all of it. He knows what it takes, you know? He's the one who's
It is a maintained road road because it's greater. A road that's greater, it's got glasses of maintained road. And greater the summertime, but doesn't mean you have to plow. I've only known this because the honey were on a boat, but never graded it. The fellow shot a moose in the chart. The township said, hey, hey, look. I want to get a lawyer to fight. I heard the chart. I know it's just saying that's that's what they gave it. If it's if it's rated, it's mainly is the town.
Okay.
Yeah, so through through the chair, if I, just to clarify, if I did say that it's under gain, my apologies. But I remember a certain event indicating most of it's